We call for Westmoreland City Council Meeting from March 21, 2019 at 7:00 PM. We'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. It's a little bit chilly, so we appreciate you coming out this evening. Pastor John, I think he's going to do our devotion for us tonight. Thank you.
I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here, and I want to just take a moment. I told Ms. Carter that I'd only be 15 or 20 minutes, and she looked at me, her eyes got real big.
Just like I do on Saturday.
Yeah, like she is on Sunday, but you won't fall asleep off this one, right?
Yes.
Okay, good, all right. I want to share with you real quick something that I shared this past Sunday with our church. Obviously, this past Sunday was St. Patrick's Day, and it's the day that we all celebrate. You know, it's a great time, but it's an interesting thing that St. Patrick wrote a number of years ago, and it's a prayer, and I thought it would be... It's very good for our personal lives, but it would be great for as far as your positions in serving the community, and not only that, but also the people in the community as well. And I'm just going to share that with you, and I want to pray. The prayer is this. St. Patrick says, "As I rise today, may the strength of God pilot me, and the power of God uphold me; may the wisdom of God guide me; may the eye of God look before me; may the ear of God hear me, and the word of God speak for me; may the hand of God protect me, and the way of God lie before me; and may God shield, defend me, and the host of God save me. May Christ shield me today; may Christ be with me today, Christ before me, Christ behind me, Christ in me, Christ beneath me, and above me; Christ on my right, and Christ on my left; Christ when I lie down, and Christ when I sit; Christ when I stand, and Christ in the heart of everyone who thinks of me; and Christ in the mouth of everyone who speaks of me. May Christ be in the eye that sees me, and Christ in every ear that hears me." Let's pray. Father, I love you. God, I am grateful for these people, these people that take time out of their daily schedule to serve this community. Lord, I thank you for their service, and I thank you for their time, and I thank you for, Lord, not just what takes place on this evening, but, Lord, what takes place in the minds and the hearts of these leaders throughout the week, and throughout the month, and throughout the year. Lord, we ask that you would bless them. We ask that you would continue to work in and through them, as, Lord, we know that their desire is first and foremost to seek you. Lord, their desire is to glorify you, but, Lord, their desire also is to make this community better for you. We thank you for them. We thank you for these that are gathered here, and those that are going to be watching on the Internet tonight. Would we ask your blessing, continue on this community? And we know that the only things that happen here are good, and that's because of what you do in and through your people, and so we ask again your blessing on this night. We thank you, and we love you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. You're welcome. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Kelly, if you will call the row, please.
Bento.
Present.
Please.
Here.
Wilkerson.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Brown. Here. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. We hadn't informed, so we will proceed with the meeting. Next item is to adopt the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. It is written. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no one but has signed up for public comments, so the next item is the minutes from the February 21, 2019 meeting. I move to adopt the minutes for February 21.
A second.
Have a motion by Councilman Bento and a second by Councilwoman Wilkerson to accept the three minutes. Any discussion?
On a couple of items there, we approved the minutes of 1/29/19, and also we approved the minutes of 2/7/19, special call meeting. There wasn't anything to indicate how the vote went on those.
Does the topic be there also, what the call was for?
I don't know that that's necessary, but I'm just... My corrections was that the vote wasn't listed.
If they were, I'd have listened.
Okay, we'll insert those into the minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor, we approve your correction. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is a January financial statement.
I move to accept the corrected January financial statement.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Carter and a second by Councilman Leif to accept the corrected January financial statement. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the February financial statement, 2019.
I move to accept the February financial statement.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Wilkerson and a motion by Councilwoman Wilkerson, and a second by Councilman Bento to accept the February financial statement. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Move with new business. Mr. Taylor, you're up.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all for allowing me to come tonight. The only thing that has changed is changed for the positive. And last year, TWRA donated the fish, and we normally buy 400 pounds, and they donated 500 pounds. The only thing to add is, I don't know exactly what they'll bring. I can control kind of when they brought them, when we bought them, but when TWRA says, "Hey, we're ready to come your way," it'll be that week. I just don't know what day. We in the past have closed the lake after we stopped it until after the fishing came here. So if it didn't cause a problem last year, we were able to do that, even though it was a couple days earlier. So that's the only thing that's really changed. And I'd also like to commend the Public Works Department, and they were awesome. They, we needed, and they just did an awesome job, so I can publicly thank them for all their hard work.
So they'll contact you when they go deliver, so then... Will you put signs out of what you do when you propose?
Well, I've got homemade signs that I put up. I may try to look to do something better, because they're not that... I don't think. But typically, the police department and codes have been real good about patrolling too, because we did have people when we first started to go in out there the night before the rodeo and catch fish, which kind of defeats the purpose. But the big area is when you come in, the driveway that goes over to where the picnic table is, that's the big area to keep the people out of. If we had like a road closed sign to put across that driveway, that would be, you know, the best way, because that's where people tend to migrate over there, kind of where it's kind of hidden a little. But nothing... We've really not had any negatives, and this will be the ninth year of doing it, so... Last year, they caught over 400 fish. Every child walked away with something. We had 70-something children bought. I'd say we probably gave away at least 60 rod and reels, so the community's behind it, so... And I think they still will be this year, so I haven't seen, said, or heard anything to make that change, so...
I move to approve the fishing rodeo. You work with Public Works to put your signs up, keep the public out, you know, before we turn it.
A second.
And I will... We have Facebook page as well, where we always recognize the city for letting us do it, and all the sponsors throughout the year, and it'll be in the newspaper as well, so...
Thank y'all. We have motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And you can check with Kelly when you need to pick up a city's donation event. Thank you. Next item is Charetta How Lake Adjustment. Ms. Sherry comes to the work study and presented that, so... I'll entertain a motion and say how the council wants to move on that.
I spoke to Sherry the day after the work study, and she said she felt like from what was being said, that, you know, she understood that it would go against the policy, and if, you know, if y'all chose not to do an adjustment, that she would be fine, if she could pay within six months. And she did go ahead and submit the first payment of that, so, you know, I told her I couldn't say for sure what would happen, but...
I make a motion not to allow another adjustment, since she's already had one within a year, according to our policy, but we will give her extra time to make payments on this 3,000-plus bill. Kelly to work with her on that, whatever timeframe you see fit.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Carter and a second by Councilman Brown. No late adjustment will be allowed because of our policy. She has had an adjustment within the last 12 months, but extra time will be allowed, and Kelly will be able to set that payment up for her. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is to hire Michael Candler as full-time police officer.
Good evening. I've got Michael Candler here before you. Michael is a graduate of the Tennessee Law Enforcement Training Academy, class 1349. He has an 11-year-old child, and he has one on the way just any minute. Michael lives in Lefebvre, and he has got, let's see, he's got 11 years law enforcement. He's got eight years in high dignitary security, and then he is, he's got several years in SWAT, so he was Special Weapons and Tactics.
I'll make a motion to hire Michael Candler.
Yes, sir.
As full-time police officer.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Leif and a second by Councilwoman Wilkerson to hire Michael Candler as a full-time police officer. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Officer Candler, welcome to Westmoreland.
Thank you very much. Thank y'all.
Okay, next item is to accept Officer Ladd's resignation.
I move to accept Officer Ladd's resignation.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Councilman Leif and a second by Councilman Brown to accept Officer Ladd's resignation. Any discussion?
Can I add on that, at Chief Ray's recommendation? Is that what they already do?
Chief Ray spoke about him the last time we met, and under the circumstances, I believe it's a wise choice for him and the community.
And we're still staying in contact with him.
Sure.
Stay in contact with him, try to help him out, as well as we can.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the exit, to allow the chief to do an auction for the police vehicles. We have our attorney here in case there's anything that needs to be added in or have questions on this. We feel like Doug deals, we cannot have good luck with our police department, Doug deals, so they want to just do a private auction, advertise it as such, and any sticklerism?
You just vote to declare surplus property and then authorize the auction.
Do we need to have a list of all that before we vote?
At some point, you're going to have to have a list. Some of those cars, some of those cars are seized cars as well.
I guess we vote to have the auction, and then at that point, when we get ready to have the auction, I guess you have to advertise the VIN numbers and such?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. VIN, make and model of the cars, and VIN. The only thing I'm unsure of is, is it 30 days advertisement or two weeks? Just two weeks.
You did a bad auction here yet?
Not yet, so I'm going to wait and see, and then try to find somebody more. Start jumping on that.
How many vehicles is it?
We need to have 11.
Do we need to go ahead and deny, make a motion to declare surplus property of those 11 vehicles?
Well, I think... How long do you think it's going to be before you do this? I would like to get it done in April. Then you need to go ahead and do that, vote on that too.
I make a motion that we declare the 11 police vehicles surplus property.
Have a motion by Councilman Brown, a second by Councilman Bento to declare the 11 vehicles as surplus property and to allow for the auction in April.
Yes, sir.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, but motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Can I clarify about it? So some of those, because they're seized, the money will go to the drug fund, and the others will go back to the general fund. Is that correct?
You'll just have to check the drug fund policy and see how that goes. I would say probably yes.
Yeah, the others to drug fund, drug seizure.
Your motion declared surplus, right?
Yes, my motion declares the 11 vehicles surplus property.
Okay, next item on the agenda is set the spring cleanup date.
Just clarification. We declared surplus property. Should we make a motion that we give the chief the authority to handle the auction, advertising, Or surplus, yes, but then does he need to be designated to take care of?
I must have misunderstood, because I had that in part of the motion.
Well, I didn't hear that, but that's fine with me, if that's what they said.
I put and allow for auction in April, but I might have misunderstood.
I'm good with that. That's what's in the minutes.
Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
You want to do amendment?
We can.
You're okay.
We're doing amendment to that.
Okay.
That's how I understand it.
Okay.
Next item is the spring cleanup date, April 27, if that's acceptable.
I move we set the spring cleanup date to April 27.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Wilkerson and a second by Councilman Leif to accept April 27 as the April cleanup day, or our spring cleanup day. We use it 8 to 9.
That's a Saturday, right?
Yes. Any discussion?
Advertisement?
Yes, we have.
What forms are we going to do this year?
We'll put it in, I think we'll run that in the paper, put it on Facebook ads, and I believe we'll put it on the water bills.
Yeah, I'll be able to make it on the water bill.
Further discussion?
And just to clarify, after the advertisement, does advertisement have some sort of format for, and what things people can bring?
Yes, it has. We don't accept tires, all of those kinds of things.
And where brush goes, because it goes to different locations.
Yes.
And we also make provisions for the elderly and disabled if they call City Hall and request Public Works to come by and pick up.
Okay. Just want the public to be fully aware of the option, of the opportunity they got here to take advantage of, something like this.
Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the cross-connection plan that we're required by TDEC to send in. The only thing that I'm wondering is, do we need to assign that a resolution number? Because we are accepting, that is the policy for the city. Okay, so that would be...
Resolution number?
32019.
Dash two.
And this format, this plan was in task?
Yeah, it's basically in my TDEC.
TDEC. I make a motion to accept resolution R032019-dash-two, the cross-connection control plan as referred to us by TDEC.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Carter and a second by Councilman Brown for resolutions of the R032019-dash-two, our cross-connection plan. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is resolution R032019-dash-one for County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I move to adopt R032019-dash-one, the County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Have a motion for Councilman Bento, second by Councilwoman Carter to accept resolution R032019-dash-one, Hazard Mitigation Plan. Any other discussion about this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to allow Jacob Blankenship to obtain his CDL, and with that, it's February 21, we discussed giving him the $1 per hour raise with that when he obtains
Make a motion to allow Jacob Blankenship to obtain his CDL upon completion, a $1
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilman Leif, second by Councilman Brown to allow Jacob Blankenship to obtain his CDL upon completion, receiving $1 per hour raise. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Last item on the agenda tonight is the second reading of ordinance 022019-dash-one, which is an ordinance to rezonate the Hessen property at 1717 Pleasant Grove Road. And I'll see if you have any comments on that, and then we'll open the public hearing. Okay, hearing none. I'll open the public hearing, 7:27. The Jason Hessen property is approximately 1.79 acres. The property located at 1717 Pleasant Grove Road, and we're asking that it be rezoned from R1 Low Density Residential District to C2 Highway Services District. Property is identified as parcel 47.02, as shown on the Sumter County Property Tax Map 28. This is a request for rezoning of parcel on the northeast corner of the intersection of Pleasant Grove Road and Highway 31E. For property to the north is Zone C2 Highway Service District, and property across Pleasant Grove Road to the southeast is Zone Industrial 1, General Industrial District. This request can be considered an extension of the existing commercial district. This has gone through planning and zoning, and has the blessings of our state planner, and it had first reading in February, and this is a second reading. If anyone in the audience that would like to come and speak about this rezoning issue during the public hearing. Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing at 7:29 PM, and we'll entertain a motion.
I make motion to... I make a motion to pass second reading ordinance 022019 dash one, rezoning Hessen property at 1717 Pleasant Grove Road.
I second that motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Leaf, and a second by Councilwoman Carter to accept on second reading ordinance 022019 dash one, of the ordinance to rezonate the Hessen property at 1717 Pleasant Grove Road to C2. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's call the roll, remember.
Leaf?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. There's no other business now, the full council will entertain a motion to adjourn, so we'll...
Second.
Just making this adjourn.